I'm an attorney for five minutes. Paul, can you hear me?
He's muted.
Paul, you're still muted?
Yes, I'm here.
So we have a resolution for the Strochia Rivera accessory apartment?
We do.
And we did pass it last week. We closed the public hearing and we just needed to do a draft resolution for, or a resolution for them.
We, we have a resolution for Strochia for tonight?
Yes. Yeah, yep.
Okay, no, I have it. It's there.
Oh, okay, we have it. And I'm going to ask you to start off with the first, be it further resolved.
Okay, very good. Now therefore be it resolved that based on the applications and the findings herein and pursuant to the zoning code and town law, planning board hereby approves a special use permit for the project. We have further resolved that pursuant to the zoning code and New York State town law, the planning board hereby grants site plan approval for the project. And the chairman is auth- conditionally authorized to sign the project site plans after receiving confirmation that, one, the local law adopted by the town of Lloyd, town board, increasing the allowed size of accessory apartments is in effect. And two, all fees owed to the town of Lloyd have been paid. We have further resolved that upon execution of approved site plans, the town's code enforcement author, officer is authorized to issue any zoning permits, building permits or other permits approvals to allow construction to proceed. This approval shall expire as a special use, expires for more than 12 months for any reason. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court, then the remainder shall stay in effect. And be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, copies shall be mailed, shall be filed with a town clerk and mailed to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I have a motion to approve, approve the resolution as read. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? And this motion has passed. The resolution has passed, sorry. Thank you.
Peter and I are here. My name is Cassandra. I'm representing Evolution Energy and Peter is on the call with me.
Great. Can you explain a little bit about your application?
Yes, so we are looking to install a 25 solar panel array on the property, 45 Gabberty, and we are looking to install it between the forest and the wall behind the home to the left.
Okay. Any questions from staff?
Dave, do you know, are they a sewer or septic out there?
Septic out there? The other issue I'll bring up and I'll show my screen here so everybody can see it. Once I figure out where that is. So these are the plans that we see. The arrays in the rear of the property. Septic, I don't know, Christian. However, it gets more complicated. Because it appears where the array is going to be is in wetlands. Christian, do you know anything about the DEC and placement of solar arrays in wetlands?
I don't, it depends upon whether or not that's the actual wetland buffer or that's the wetland check zone. As you know, we have-
There's a hundred foot beyond that. This is the wetlands as mapped now. It's never been mapped. It's not mapped on the property and the property is mowed, you know, back to where the trees are. But I just thought I'd bring this up.
I believe that would need to be a permanent activity.
But it would. Yeah, is that, is that a classified wetland by DEC? I mean, it is a mapped wetland.
It is. This is the map that we pull off the Ulster County website, which reflects the DEC's mapping.
Okay.
There are, there are Armicore waters as well.
Yeah.
But they would not, I don't believe they would impact where this location is.
Yeah, you need to verify where the DEC wetland is.
Yeah.
And we have the new regulations coming out on the first of the year. So I don't know what class wetland this would be.
For some reason I have in my mind that I've heard that they're a little more flexible with, with arrays, only because it's not like a structure. It's just a pole, right? The hiccup with the array is the shadow cast, right, on floor and fauna. But again, this isn't so onerous that I think it would be an issue. I just think, I didn't want the board to pull the trigger not knowing whether the, you know, there would be some DEC jurisdictional power here.
Yeah, I can't speak to the DEC, but I don't believe that they would really have a, an issue with this, but they still might need to issue a permit. So we need to have the applicant get in touch with DEC and give her a read.
Right, if it's, if it's, if it's out of the wetland and in the adjacent area, what DEC is going to be concerned about is how stormwater is controlled to make sure there's no impact on the wetland. The Christians are right, they would require a permit. If it's actually in the designated wetland, then that may be a little more challenging as you suggested, Dave, depending on the value of the wetland. So is that something the applicant, have you all done any homework on the wetlands?
We haven't done any homework on the wetlands. Unfortunately, we weren't aware that this was in the wetlands area. I, I believe that it was not.
Okay.
Any other questions from staff or the board?
Cassandra, what's the dimensions of the solar array?
So this is 500, oh, sorry. This is 548 square feet.
Are decommissioning plans necessary for this too? Not because it's too larger? Anybody else got any questions? I thought we were going to push this off till next month.
Sorry.
Fair enough. Good. All right, Cassandra, we're going to see you next month. We have a little more conversation on this. Do your homework with the DEC and see what you need to have done before we can go any further.
I just want to go on the record that I'm rec-
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Cassandra. And thank you, Bill. Okay, as far as public hearings go, Mr. Mizetti is next month. And Highland Estates subdivision, Highland, I'm sorry, subdivision Route 9W, section block and lot number 96.9-1-35.210. The applicant is seeking a two lot subdivision. No new construction is proposed at this time. And that public hearing is also set for next month. Huh?
Patty's here.
Hi Patty. Is Patty for who? Oh, do you want to talk to her? Talk a bit? Not yet. I believe we still have the, it's for the fifth, right? So.
Okay, yeah, I, if Ford has any questions, I'm here to answer them. If not, I had no questions.
Anybody have any other questions? I don't think we did last month either. It was pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Once we got the easement settled.
Right.
I think we're good. Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, Patty, what about the, you decided on the road to driveway? Yeah, what we ended up doing was preparing a meet and bounce description for the conveyance of lot number two and making specifically, and I'm glad I do.
You want to speak into the microphone, please? I'm kidding with you. I'm kidding, Patty.
Tough crowd. So the, we prepared the meet and bounce description for the conveyance of lot number two that says parcels subject to the rights of others in and to those portions of Vandevort Street and Collins Avenue used as a private roadway as the same was laid out in 1931 by Frank S. Hopkins CE. So I ran the chain of title back to Laura Pim owned that land. And in 1931, she subdivided it, but there was no subdivision map filed. But from that time forward, Vandevort Street and Collins Avenue were laid, were called, actually a public highway, but they were never conveyed to the town. They're not currently town roadways. But with the conveyance of this, we will memorialize the fact that they do exist as roadways. They've been laid out since 1931 and the property is subject to it.
Okay. So I think we're good on that. But Christian, good with it? Paul, you good with that?
I am.
All right, good.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
We're all good. Thank you, Patty.
Just an update on the John Jacobs. I have revised maps for Sarah on that as well. We're still waiting on DEC. It's been submitted to them for review, but they have not sent any comments back yet. So that also holds off until January.
Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, all right. Happy Thanksgiving, all right.
Okay. And then we have an informal discussion on Route 9W 33555, Route 9W, the mixed-use property. If you would mind having-
Can we just wait a couple of minutes? My team is, they hit a bit of traffic and-
Sure. I missed ticking and I almost had the record. Thanks, buddy. It's his, what do you want to know? I'm very familiar with the property, although I can't-
He's not here.
Can't represent.
I'm not representing, no. I'm just, if you had a question about the layout of the land, I'm familiar with it.
Oh, he was on before.
His wife stepped in and he was on listening.
That was his, that was his wife.
I apologize.
That was his applicant from the solar- Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, you're saying that I'm looking at my thing saying, geez, what's that, just do-
No, he was on.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just kidding. Well.
No, we're going to, we're going to give the applicant a minute there.
Of course.
We got, look at all these people here to listen to what's going on down there. We definitely have to-
Send somebody out for coffee.
Look at us, we get to watch us sit here and wait. I was like, I'm going for you.
Get out the frisbee, they also want to discuss.
Well, yeah, while, while we're, if I could have the entire board here listen to this one. So I did send yous out all your information on maybe getting some classes to update your, your, the education status and what the criteria is for being on the planning board. I would just suggest always take a look at it, know that you have to have four hours of training and, and just update it. Paul, you didn't get it. I just decided it was probably not a good thing to send to you. You probably have more credits than the rest of us, but, but yeah, just, it's an easy, easy way to meet your criteria as far as the, the four hours of training. So if you could, just look at-
That was so.
An email did say that you could carry your credits over to next year.
So who wants to listen to the chair of the board the next time when I say we can roll our, our minutes over?
That's the question, but you know.
I don't know if that's true.
Yeah. Okay. But it is true. But all right, Paul, do you have anything else for us while we're in limbo time?
Sure. Just wanted to let the board know that we did receive comments from the ADC Ulster Falcon Ridge project on the draft scope. And we've sent those comments out to the consultants to respond to them. They have asked to not be on the board's agenda until January to give your consultants time to respond to those comments and to make sure that the board has ample opportunity to review everything before they come to that meeting. The, the goal would be hopefully to get to a point at the January meeting where you can approve the, the scope for the draft environmental impact statement that they need to prepare. And that, the, you know, from that point, they can go off and do their homework and come back with a draft environmental impact statement at some future date.
Okay, great. So if we get paperwork on this, we've really got to go through this the same way we did most of the other times. I would say just invest that time into reading and understanding what it is we're, we're going to evaluate. So we-
Right.
Make decisions for everybody, that's for sure. Anybody else got anything?
Is there any update on the financing for the other project?
For the villages? I don't, we would have to ask our staff. Dave, do you have anything on that?
So the town board approved, as per your resolution, the operations and maintenance plan the villages sent to us. They approved that last night. So that's in hand. That's one of the last items conditionally before we can move on. The Apple Lane, I think I mentioned last time, the Apple Lane remediations is done. And that, you know, there are deciduous and evergreen trees planted. There is a very large berm, much larger than I anticipated, that the deciduous trees are sitting on. And the fence is installed, looks very nice. I believe the homeowners there are happy-ish. But it's, it is, it is sort of put back some of the viewshed impacts, you know, that were taken away. So that's a win. I'm waiting for contract information for the pump station. So that'll be in hand. I do believe, I've heard through the grapevine, and we all know the grapevine, that financing will be closed, Bill, middle of December. And one of, or two of the sort of model houses, I've been put back on order with West Chester Modular. So they should be after the financing lands. Because it only took them about 60 days to manufacture those and have them delivered. So probably sometime in the spring, we'll see forward back out there. My understanding is Midhuston Construction will do some of the, or most of the project management stuff, which is sort of something we knew was coming. That's all I know.
And the traffic light is no, is still waiting till they-
It's still waiting for financing, yeah.
And do I, do we understand that the state has approved the rescue?
Not yet. Not, I haven't, I don't have any information on that yet. It rained today.
We, we also, so John first had asked us some time ago and we had responded about how long their approvals are, are in effect. And we tied their approval date back to your original approval of the overall site plan. That was what Dave felt comfortable in, in, from a zoning determination standpoint. So that means that they have, I believe, until 2026 to substantially get this project underway. And, you know, if not, then they have to come back for a renewal from the board. So we're, we're trying to keep their feet to the fire as much as we can in terms of, you know, the, the time that the zoning code allows for their approvals to remain in effect.
And for clarity, that's for site plan. It's a, it's, there's an expiration date attached to site plan approvals. However, Paul, you'll, you'll help me remember, I think it was August of this year that started the clock on the one year for the traffic light.
That's correct.
That's right. Yep, yep. One way or another.
And we had asked them to do that before anything, because if they were doing construction, we wanted to make sure that that light is going to be tied into the safety of the public, not, not having to deal with, not having that light.
That's correct.
That's right.
Anything else? Anybody? Have you texted your people, find out how much longer?
Yeah. They should have been here a couple of minutes ago.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times $300 an hour. Quite a bit. Well, I'm just being, I'm trying to help them out a little bit. Not for me either.
I didn't realize you could see the train.
You can't. That's showing what the house looks like. Yeah, you're funny guy, funny guy. All right, how much more? Did you text them? Can they text you? Probably not today. You can hear everything is being presented, because this is very informal. They're only going to tell us what they're doing.
There will be a public hearing as it comes.
But not today, sir.
So if I can sort of ride around top of that. My name is Dave Barton. I'm the Building Department Director. I work right upstairs in the town hall. I have plans. Any of you are welcome to come to my office and, and look at the large plans. I can also email you. Some of the files are quite large, but I can email you them as well. I will, Sarah, you don't have any cards on you, do you? Okay. So my email is really simple. It's D. Barton, B.A.R.T.O.N. at townoflloyd.com. You can email me or Sarah and we'll be happy to send them to you. But again, they're, they're available in my office anytime the town hall is open. You're welcome to come and ask questions.
Something else, I just made notes, those aren't final plans.
These are purely conceptual at this point. In addition, I was going to ask the board tonight if the, if, you know, after this informal presentation tonight to the board, if, if the board would be interested and, you know, if the applicant feels like what they've offered to you guys today is sort of, you know, where they want to go, at least generally, conceptually, maybe having an informational meeting where the town would send a letter to you all, everybody, you know, down Van Wagner, Highland, Roberto, any, any place basically from 9W all the way down to Vineyard Avenue, all those homes in there would, would get a letter. Because some of you will be, you'll be impacted by some of the traffic issues that the board is concerned about, that I'm concerned about. Viewshed, you know, visual impacts, things like that. But if we had an informational meeting, we could send that invite out, have the public come in, show them sort of in a more, you know, substantial way, yeah, with, you know, boards and things like that, where they can ask questions.
And which we always do that on a large project, anyway, so everybody will be well aware of what's happening.
Yeah, we're all seeing it for the first time today.
Right, we're all seeing it. And since we're, go ahead, Larry, what do you got? You got a question?
Is this a done deal?
No.
We have sunset?
Of course.
Absolutely. And, and just let's be clear, today we know nothing more about this project than you guys. Although we have gotten the prints and we looked at it, we can see it.
Got 20 minutes.
But nobody, but nobody's come and said this is, you know, they're not asking us to sign, do anything with it yet. They're just telling us what their conceptual idea of what they want to do to that property is.
So, one other question. Obviously, we're not going to be able to talk tonight, so.
Right. And I'm just letting you guys talk now, because we, what do you want to talk, you sit here and look?
Just, just to let you got, yeah, just to let you guys know, all yous.
Yeah.
How many people, and I know somebody here knows, how many people in apartments, so we don't have to wait another month and Simons do over it, how many people do you think are going to be in these apartments? How many apartments?
Well, they'll, they'll tell you that tonight.
So now that they're here, let's, let's kind of gain control again. But now that they're here, we're going to ask the applicant to come up and speak to this project, if you don't mind.
And just to let, just to let you people know, the town sets the zone, this board just follows the code. If it's allowed in the zone, we just follow the code for that zone. So we don't make the decisions. We just-
It, it wouldn't be here if it wasn't.
Yes.
Well, Larry, to be, I mean, to be sort of more precise in that, it is allowed in the, in the zone, otherwise I would not have allowed them to appear here tonight. However, there are a great many things that the board will listen to, to the public on, things like viewshed impacts, right? I know, I know where you live. You know, I've been on your street. You know, I've been on this property many, many times or by almost 18 years here. So if there are particular visual impacts or, or noise or, or light impacts, this board will listen and ask the developer to mitigate them so that they lessen the impacts to the greatest extent practical.
Well-
That as well.
But if, if I could just ask the public now, Larry, everybody involved here wants to listen to the project, let's have her speak to the application, give an informal discussion to, to us, okay? You're here just to observe tonight and hear what is being presented to the town. That's the best I could do for you. When we go any further, then we can have more, we'll have public meetings or public hearings. We'll have an informal discussion at a, you know, in a place where we can get everybody in the public here to listen to the whole thing, and you'll be able to see how we work this through. Again, nothing is ever rubber stamped. I'm going to say that because I've listened to the public enough and I've read Facebook enough to think we don't rubber stamp anything. We listen, we have to mitigate the issues that you, the public, would be considered an impact on. So we try to have them do that to the best of their ability. But again, as Franco said, the law is what it is. The zoning establishes that law, and what we do is we check off the checkoffs, okay? And that's how we do it, okay? So that being said, if I can have the applicant come up, since we waited on you. Thank you.
Blame it on the state.
What's crazy is I always forget, it doesn't matter how much rain, people will always drive slowly. But I apologize, that's on me.
You can blame the bridge.
I didn't cross the bridge. But, so, hello everyone. Hello, board, and hello, members of the community. So I do actually just kind of, following up to everything the board said and I'm hearing all of your concerns, good job. No, we end this week, but um-
You are. Your name and who are you, where are you from?
Sorry. So I'm Lauren O'Neil from the O'Neil Group. We are the, you know, developer, who currently has just bought the property. I am both the lead developer and our attorney and-
My name is Brandon Gallorenzo. I work in acquisition and development. I actually helped design, well, project manager, I actually helped design this property as well.
So this property and this area is somewhere that, you know, we, we are new to, though we're not unfamiliar with. We have a pretty good track record in Duchess County. And so I do want to just, just to quash a lot of public concern. We will, if, if there is interest in it, we can host an informal neighbor meeting with where we can take your direct feedback. We are not looking to pigeonhole, you know, put a circle in a square or a square in a circle. You know, we want something that is going to be a overall benefit to the community. And that's something we kind of, you know, base our mission statement, I guess, on. It's a, it's a value of our company. So just a little background about us, we're a family-owned and operated developer. The company was started by my parents, Paulo and Vember O'Neil. When they came over from Ireland, they started in construction. Eventually, they started to get interested in building their own projects. The thing is, you know, we're not a cookie cutter developer. No two of our projects look the same. They, you know, we, we designed them, heard a lot of feedback from the planning board, their architectural and engineering consultants, as well as the community, especially on the landscaping side. And I'm not sure if anyone had a chance to look at the landscaping plan, but, or has familiarity with Michael Boyce, but he does the landscaping at Vassar and Marist Colleges. So he has, you know, a very good track record of being able to produce great screening that integrates a project into an area. And, you know, we're not trying to build something that we want to hide, especially because of the commercial mixed-use component. But it, you know, we do want to make it more, you know, blended. So the project that we're here to discuss tonight, the address is 355 Route 9W. It's in the town of Lloyd and it's a 4.2 acre parcel. So currently it has the vacant Chevy dealership on it. We, oh, I didn't realize the point of it. So currently it has the vacant Chevy dealership on it. It's been vacant for a number of years, from what I understand. And it is in the WG Walkway Gateway District and Gateway Mixed Use Sub District, as far as zone goes. So our master concept plan was prepared by Hudson Land Design. So the, the plan is four different buildings where, and, you know, that is a attempt to mitigate massing as well as to present more of a walkable downtown-y kind of storefront feel. So all commercial would be on the first floor. It would be, you know, glass windows, storefronts, mom and pops. We're not talking about a big box retailer. We're talking about, you know, your pizza shop, your bagel shop, your liquor store, you know. If you want to see kind of the, sorry? If you want to see the caliber of our tenants, our commercial tenants, you can look at our One Duchess project in Poughkeepsie. They're all, you know, small businesses. We have a hairstylist off, you know. It's, we like to support the community. We think it's important. You know, there's enough Amazons and Walmarts around. So the plan is that each of these four buildings will have 29 residential units in them. And then behind, you see there's a townhouse collection. Again, we're trying to diversify the type of development in order to blend with the area, mitigate massing, give different options. So I know a question that people asked was, you know, how many, I guess, tenants would we expect? So it is 190 bedrooms. You don't, you wouldn't say 190 tenants for that, because there are people who luckily enough can afford the two-bedroom on a single-person salary. They have their home office. I would say it's, based on my experience, probably 175 tenants, including, you know, there are a few three-bedroom units- There are a few three-bedroom units. There's sixteen all over. Um, and so the only place we typically see children who would be entering the school district would be in those three-bedroom units, in, in my professional experience. Um, so the four mixed-use buildings would have approximately twenty-five hundred square feet of commercial space, um, per building. So, that's, you know, we could do one or two storefronts in each one. We kind of, we like to go by market demand. We, we see what happens with the market. We, we build a vanilla box to start, and then we support whatever tenant needs. You know, we've done previously, um, you know, built in the improvement loan into the lease. So that a tenant who, you know, is just getting off the ground, they can, you know, get some initial investment into building out the space. Um, we like to be supportive. Um, so it's a total of ten thousand square feet. Um, the bulk of the units are one-bedrooms. So you're going to think, you know, young professionals, single people is our typical demographic that we see. Um, in a lot of one-bedrooms too, we see empty nesters, people who don't want to leave the local area. But, you know, their house is too big for them. That's who we typically see in one and two bedrooms. Um, so parking will be a combined mix of surface, surface and underground parking. So, um, each building will have its own garage. Obviously, townhouses have driveways. And then there's, you could see the parking island in the middle. That would probably service more of the commercial space than the, um, you know, most residents are going to have underground parking spots.
Under the buildings?
Under the buildings. Correct. Um, and there is no parking proposed for in front of those mixed-use buildings. Because again, we're trying to give off a walkable downtown. We don't want that, it, we're not asking for any barriers or anything for street parking. Um, so that is the basic, um, you know, layout of the actual buildings. For site access, um, it will be from nine W. You can see how, it's a two-way road. You can, you can kind of see how it's designed. Um, that was taken with good care. Um, it's in our experience what works. So there's an entrance on nine W, and then there is a two-way as well on Roberto. Okay, we'll talk about it with you guys. That's okay.
Let the applicant speak, it's not public comment tonight.
Um, so, another thing that I think is important to mention is that there will be, it will. It will present as three stories on nine W because of the way the property slopes, but it will be four stories from the back. So we, I guess it's, the concept is pinning foundations, if anyone's heard of it. We kind of, we work with the topography in order to not, we're not trying to build on top. We're building into almost, to make it more seamless. Um. So, the project will disturb more than one acre. We will obviously do a slip, you know, at a project of this size, we're, we're going to have to. Um, we, we've worked on pretty robust ones before, and we are confident that this project will have no adverse effect to flooding in any way. You know, at the end of the day, something I always tell concerned people is flooding, if the project causes flooding, that's a problem for us too. Because I think this is important to note, is that, you know, a lot of developers will come in, they'll get the approvals, they'll sell the land. Or they'll come in, they'll build it, they'll sell the project. We are a full-service, I guess, developer. Um, so we not only bring the property through acquisitions, any environmental cleanup necessary at our own cost. Um, we then have an affiliate construct, and then at the end, um, we hire our own property managers from the local area. So everyone that manages our properties in Duchess is from Duchess, and we oversee that through an affiliate, the O'Neil Group. The O'Neil Group is actually who the property managers work for, but there's different affiliates throughout the way. Um, so, the buildings are set close to nine W. Because again, we believe that what, you know, the town wants to see here is, you know, accessible, walkable, commercial space. Um. That is why it is designed that way. Um, additionally, uh, we do always include, you know. All of our properties have Energy Star appliances. If we can do solar, we do. I can't make that promise at this point. Because that will, we have to get obviously a deeper study on that. It just, it's surprising how often you can't do it when you want to. Um, and then another amenity that, um, something that we always try to do when we build a project in a neighborhood. Is add back some kind of public good. So you can see here, there's two pocket parks on each side of the commercial space. Um, there's one to the left there and one to the right. So, um. Those will be for the public, open to the public. Um, they will be a donation by us, whether the town wants that land deeded. Or we keep it for the maintenance and insurance reasons, that is something that we can figure out as we go. But it is something we would like to offer to the town. And I think also, it, it does also help us. Because, you know, people in the area helps our commercial tenants do well, and that helps us in the backend get our rent. Um, so there's also communal green space between the buildings that would be open to the public. I mean, there's, it's not a gated community. No one's, no one's not allowed to come in. The garages will have doors. But otherwise, you know, the space is part of the community. Um. Yeah, I guess, at this point, um, just some, you know, metrics that are of note. Um, the building, eighty-five percent building coverage is allotted in the zone. This is only, um, thirty-seven percent building coverage. So, um, the lot coverage is sixty-three percent, um, whereas eighty-five percent is permitted. So again, under the allotted lot coverage, um, the area requires a ten percent minimum landscaping. Our plan has thirty-seven percent, and the frontage occupancy, um, requires seventy-five percent. We have seventy-seven percent. So, um, all in all, you know, I appreciate everyone taking the time to come here. Again, this is a concept plan, so the point of this meeting is to come and show you what we've been working on now, before we get into all the specifics. And, you know, everyone wastes too much time, money going down, uh, the wrong path. I'm not sure if Mike McCormick, the architect, is here yet. Where's that? Well, so, um, Michael McCormick is pretty well-known and across the river too. Um, but so, um. Okay, concept plan, we don't want to go too far down and, and find out in front of the planning board and the public, a public comment that absolutely no one wants any of this, and it's completely wrong, and it doesn't work. So the reason we're here presenting tonight is to just find out, you know, are we going in the right direction? Does anyone have any questions at this point? Um, is there anything we can help with?
I have a question. Go ahead. You're showing a right turn in and a right turn out on that, uh, traffic movement there, correct? Get back to Dave, the project.
Yes, in the diagram, yes.
That is a, a very bad stretch of nine W with a lot of accidents. So I can see people coming out of there wanting to go north and cutting across the highway, and that could be a problem. We have a similar situation with the village, and they're putting a traffic light on Mayor Drive to mitigate that. So I, I think you may have to think about how you're going to handle that traffic, uh, coming in and coming out of there. That, that, that to me can be a bone of contention, in my opinion.
I mean, you do have, you do have the middle turning lane there, but the problem is, is it's so close to the traffic light to the north.
Backs up.
It, it's, it back up, and during, you'd never get out of there going north during rush hour.
Okay, yeah, so that's definitely a change exactly at this point that we should make. Um, we do not ha, we have not have you engage with traffic?
We haven't, we have engaged right now. Um, he's, he's just, we just signed him up, um, and he should be complete with his study by the time we submit.
Yeah, so his, yeah, so his recommendations will tell us, you know, where to move it to.
Recreation is after, it'll be done on the site.
So, um, this is obviously a, a difficult question. Um, there are currently monitoring wells that need to be decommissioned. There are, um, what was the other? Oil tank removal?
Yeah, so.
And then, the building has tested positive for, um, a, quite a significant amount of asbestos. So we're working on a, you know, through the state, through the necessary processes. I'm sure you guys will be involved. But we will have to, um, do a contained demo on that, and that's going to, you know, take some time, but we're, we're working through what that's going to entail.
Your boss is here. That's you, Mike?
Yeah, so, um, I'll take a couple more questions if you want, or Mike can go through floor plans.
Uh, is there any zoning belief you're going to need for the four-story buildings?
I do not believe so, based on the code.
What's the height, what's the height of the buildings that are on the east side? Maximum height to the peak?
He believes thirty-six.
Ten is thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
So in the walkway gateway zone, it's five, uh, stories, um, from grade in the rear is the maximum height of the building. That's because this, when that side of the road, it slopes away. Um, they're actually going one story less than that. Um, so it could have been four at the front, but they're, they're doing, you know.
My, my other question to you would be, is there any thought of adding affordable units in this project?
So my understanding is the town requirement is ten percent. Um, so there will be ten percent at sixty-five percent AMI, will meet all the requirements. The question and something that we've been running through our economic analysis is. What percentage of workforce housing would also work on top of that sixty-five percent to get us where we need to be? Workforce is typically eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Um, you know, again, until we have a more complete concept plan, we won't really be able to run those numbers, how they work with financing and investment. And all of those things, but the hope is to maximize the availability. I mean, maximize does not mean seventy percent. That's just, I'm, like, the hope would be twenty to twenty-five percent. But, um, those units on top of the ten percent would fall somewhere between the eighty and a hundred and twenty percent AMI, is the hope. Definitely the ten percent, though, will, it's required.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if you, if you want to open the floor plans, and Mike can do any, answer any questions or go through.
He'll just kind of pull it up on the screen, and then we could talk to it.
So there'll be six commercial, all on the first floor facing nine W. Each building will have two. How do you plan on, I got a question. How do you plan on feeding the water in the sewer? Because what I'd like to do is see hydrants in, on a property, because this property is so big.
Yeah, I'm not the civil engineer, unfortunately, but I'm the architect. I'm just, yeah, I'm one of those guys that makes great pictures, so. Yeah, someone's got to do it, right? So, uh, but I, you know, our thoughts, Franco, is to feed from, certainly the existing that we have there. Um, the, Mike Bodendorf will, will get into that as we get along. And certainly provide details for the board's consideration, as well as the, the consultants.
Okay, so. And then the other, only other question I would have was fire access between the buildings. Is there, are there, is there enough room between the buildings? It was actually here in the green space off the pavement, again, blocking it.
Certainly between, between the two climbing buildings, there's access.
What's the distance between the two?
Those are floors.
Two buildings to the south, yeah, but if you go back.
There you go.
Yeah, that, right there where the, the green is, off the pavement, what's the distance between the buildings there?
Say.
At the end? No, right here.
Between the two buildings.
Right here. Over the middle. They've got quite a fire, you got to.
Let's say they're twenty.
Get fire in this building, we have to go in this property.
Look at this. About twenty, twenty-five feet. Yeah, they're about twenty.
Yeah, that's going to have to be a far department thing.
About twenty, twenty.
I just wanted to ask that question. What the distance was?
Between twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five, yeah. You can look at the, the parking spaces behind, they're about ten feet wide, so.
That's all I got.
And I apologize to the board for being a little bit late.
That's right. Look, I'm bridge traffic, right?
I'm always in trouble. Yeah, it's not, I kind of sound. Gentlemen, anything else? Any other questions? I mean, we're, like I said, we're just getting a feel for the property too, um, to speak to what you have here. I was looking at the parking on one of the, um, I gotta find the print again. I was looking at the parking, it's designated park, it would be designated parking per apartment. How many car parking spaces do you have per apartment? Looking for mine, I can't find mine.
It's one point two.
Yeah.
One point two, which my understanding, I would have to check the handbook again for the area. But, um, you know, the handbook, the engineers use, I think it's on the ninth edition. I think that meets eighty-five percent, which would be peak utilization. Um, but obviously, our, our traffic consultant will be the one to confirm that. Um, we do have, obviously, the extra spaces for commercial that, you know, we've seen in our properties. That, you know, residents who work, you know, nine to five, nine to eight off-hours will actually typically not want to do the reserved spot. And prefer to do those commercial spots that free up at those hours. Um, so we should have an, a bu, ability for some overflow, but, um, nothing's perfect. Well, the traffic consultant will be able to run those formulas.
We, we, yeah, but as in other properties that we've, um, reviewed over the years, we could tell there's always a parking issue, especially when you have a three-bedroom apartment. Now you might have three drivers. There's only parking for one and a half, blah, blah, blah. So that's how we're looking at it, is just to make sure that there's enough space for them. And visitors in other apartments that aren't, you know, you wouldn't have customers, or, I mean, not customers, but friends, relatives, whatever, visiting. So, uh, just looking at that.
Yeah, that's definitely feedback we like to hear, not hear, but learn early on. Because, um, you, you'd be surprised how many projects end up in months and months of negotiation over parking. So if, if we're not providing enough at this point, we would go back to the drawing board and figure out how to add those extra spots.
Yeah, I almost suggested you do that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
I'm trying to think of other issues that have come up in other developments that, you know, we obviously want to make sure we mitigate before there's any issues. Um, and you can finalize them so that they're, it's a cleaner drawing. Yeah, I don't know. Anything else?
It's, it's a lot for that section of road. I mean, that piece of highway is, was a problem forty years ago. I mean, I handled my share of car accidents there in nineteen eighties. So, just a lot there for that piece of road.
Well, I guess Dave, DOT will weigh in on this, right?
So, uh, that's a good, that's a good point.
Franco, uh, thank you. So there are a few cuts on the, on the site now. Um, this will be limiting those cuts to the single cut. Uh, DOT will have to issue a work permit to kind of consolidate and then add that one. Um, my understanding is Brandon's mentioned that they, you hired a traffic person, yeah. So that person will sort of have, you know, more input, um, in the future to this project than, than, than we have currently before you. It'll be, uh, DOT will certainly look at this a hard, hard.
Yeah, it's a state room.
Yeah, state room.
DOT's never taken a, a soft look, I don't think.
And they're always so quick.
Their experience, but I mean, they have to do their jobs.
So the people coming in to go to the garage are going to come through the back parking lot?
Correct, that would be the, they could come either way, but that would be the path of least resistance for them.
So the increased traffic on that road too, we would be considering what's happening there. So, um, you know, that's where the neighbors are probably all.
So to get to the back, you would actually have to go downtown, you'd have to go down.
Down?
Downtown and up.
Downtown and up.
Yeah, down and, oh, yeah, up Van Wagner that way, okay. So that's, that's what I have to look at.
That's one of the reasons why we, we would send, when my office does the notices, the informational meeting.
All the people involved in.
Up Van Wagner, right.
Yeah, that would definitely be a town, pretty much like a, a village, um, informal meeting.
And, and I expressed, I met with the, I met with the developer previously.
Yeah.
Um, and they're aware of the traffic, traffic, viewshed, lights, noise, that kind of thing.
So your, your traffic impact study is throughout the town, all the way down and around and up, yes?
It will have to be.
Yeah, it will have to be. You're just the engineer in the building. I don't know why you're answering this.
Architect, I'm the engineer.
I was trying to be funny and I said that one up.
I know enough to be dangerous.
There you go. But I, that's what I was asking, because you mentioned it in the back. I just wanted to make sure of that. But yeah, I think that's, um, well, that's a lot to really consider, yeah. That's a lot to consider.
It is.
But we don't have that data yet?
We don't, and, and I understand that it's throwing stuff at you so you could look at it in a more broader picture, okay? What are you going? Okay, what are you guys thinking? I mean?
Well, I, I remember when we, when the code, when we did this code, the walkway code. It was designed to be more walkable and connect the, the particular area on nine W with the village itself. And now, man, I don't know if this achieves that concept in a way. Maybe that's what we all have to look at. Getting back to what I was saying before, is that the traffic is going to be an issue. And it does, you know, right turn in, right turn out. It sounds like a great idea, but there'll be a lot of people who will test that when they're heading north because you're sending them south to go north again. Other than impacting Roberto Road and the connecting roads there with, you know, with the.
So if I can add, add on to what Carl's saying, at that, right where the entrance is to the site is not a divided highway. It is not until you see the double, double yellow and the, and the marked lines further north, it becomes a divided highway, which is illegal to cross. So on this site, it, it could be, right now as shown, and the DOT will weigh in on this, as will you as a board. It could be left in, left out, right in, right out. It could be a full access on the way it's, the way the road is marked now. However, the DOT, when they do their review, may ask the developer to make that a divided section of the road with the. But, but again, we don't have this data at all. I'm spitballing, just like you all are. So I, I would say let's wait until we see better data.
And I guess a question I have, just, again, not, I'm not an engineer at all. I could never have been one, even if I wanted to. I just don't have the math brain for it. But is the issue at this segment, is it speeding or congestion? So, well, can, well, so something we in our experience have seen, when it's speeding, and again, not professional, our professionals and consultants will all review and discuss it. When it is speeding, typically adding development kind of squashes that because, you know, it's harder to speed when you know there's more cars around. Just doesn't happen. If it's both, depending on time, that's a, a different issue that, that I'll defer to people with much more knowledge than myself.
Is this right before, for where forty, where the speed limit goes from forty-five to fifty-five? Isn't it right after there where it turns to fifty-five miles an hour? Going north. Right, so people tend to think they're already there and they tend to start speeding.
The gateway walkways on the print that, that Carl refers from, beer is back. And I've seen this one upstairs, correct? Because doesn't that show two and two, three, two and three-story buildings up and down the right side of nine W? My recollection is.
Yeah, it does, right. I mean, that was the original concept. As far as that goes.
Yes.
Not that I can make a promise at this point, but we've never been a one-and-done developer. So, you know, this one works. This was the first bite we could get. You know, I'm not saying that that plan couldn't become a reality and that we wouldn't work on that as well. It's just that I can only promise what I own and can do.
But if I'm not mistaken, we have design standards. Is that correct, Dave, regarding that whole strip there? You're, you're, you're gonna have to look.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with the design.
Yeah, with the design standards because it's kind of.
But we want it to look exactly like that.
I honestly prefer when there's design standards. We don't, because like I said, we don't have a cookie cutter model where we, you know, we've stacked away all the same material somewhere. It's, we're trying to design it for the area and it's tough when you have no guidance.
Thank you.
They have nine Ws divided in this picture.
That's right.
Yes.
And I've worked with Mike in the past. He's very skilled and creative, so.
Right, thank you, Dave.
I've worked with you too, Mike.
I don't know, you threw me too, so maybe that is.
We work hard and we will, certainly we can board. I'd have to say, I, I do appreciate you coming in and giving us a, a heads up on what your conceptual plan is of it. It's gonna take a long time to go through all of this, obviously. You guys tighten up your belt, know exactly what you're looking at, or, you know, further from what we're gonna impose to you. And, and I'm just gonna do this one time. And I, I gotta say to the public coming here tonight, these are the kind of planning board meetings we like to see. And this way you can see how we do what we're doing here. And it's not, you know, we're asking the questions, although this is conceptual, we don't know exactly what you're putting down. We, we've got.
They haven't been nailed yet.
Okay, so, so, right, well, that's true. But it's good that you're here because the last thing we want you to do is come in the last day of the meeting and, you know, after they've done everything they need to do and it's getting passed or, or declined, but passed would be the concern you guys would have. So then, look, they actually did do something here. It didn't just get, go. You know what I mean? And it's really important. And I'm saying that to the public, right? Just being here tonight, I hopefully you all learned a little bit of something, just as we did. We don't have all the information yet. Because now we've given them some more information, they can change that, they can get some more information from Dave, from our staff and, and tighten up their belt to make it what the town or the community wants. Larry, I really.
I know, this isn't about this.
Oh, okay. My kids are doing fine, Larry. I haven't seen you in a long time.
These meetings.
Yeah.
So is this a one-and-done meeting, the next one for us? Do we get two, three, four meetings?
This, this is, listen to what I'm gonna tell you. This is by far done. So we've got, I mean, it's gonna take months to do this.
We could end up in the firehouse.
Yeah, it could be a while. This is, I mean, as, and I'm just gonna use this example, the villages, Larry, so you know, was four years, five years. So it's not like, we really put them through the wringer for the community. Believe it or not, whoever may be the naysayer out there, but I'm telling you, we don't just do it and go. Some people like it, some don't. That's the idea of having a board and different opinions. So we're gonna have those different opinions. He's might like something that I don't, and I don't see it that way. As long as it meets the law though, that's where we get our information from. And to, we, we impose that on the applicant. Okay, that's the only thing I could tell all of you. So I mean, it's, but again, you're here, so I could tell the interest in the project. So keep coming. Just keep coming, every one of you, keep coming. Send more. We, that's what we like to see.
If you have questions that we can't answer, go, go to the town board meetings and ask the town board.
So there, and there will be at certain points where we'll have public hearings. We want input from the community. And you can directly ask the question to the applicant. We won't answer you. That's not our job to do that. So it's good that we're kind of having this going on tonight because for you, those of you who don't know the process, you're just gonna state your case. That's it. It's not a debate back and forth. And if the applicant can, they will answer your question or your concern to try and get that through, but it's not a debate. So it's like a two-minute conversation. You may say, hey, I really don't like the trees or the colors aren't good. Whatever, I'm just saying. So you, then they will look at it and say, you know, I can understand their, their concern. We'll make sure there's red, green, whatever, trees. You know, I'm just going on, but, but that's the importance of you being here. It truly means a lot to be here.
And if we need a bigger room, we can.
And that we can always do. So, and, and as we see, there are people here from different parts of the town or the village. So we can, we, we're gonna have more people because the village, obviously, there's a lot of people there that this is gonna impact to whatever degree. So are you good with that? I mean, do you, I mean, we all got that. Hopefully we can understand.
If you want to see what the project is probably gonna look like, drive over to Poughkeepsie and go to One Touchers Avenue, or go down to the river and look across. Because that's the same developer.
Those buildings are taller.
But, but the difference like you just said is every community they do these in, they're different. They're to the standard of the town, so, I mean.
But that's the quality of what you're gonna get.
I, I think it may be useful, Paul, if you're willing just to speak, you know, one or two minutes about the SEAGAR process, that might inform the public, you know, the level of review that's gonna be exercised on this.
Do you want to do that?
Well, SEAGAR is State Environmental Quality Review Act, and it sets thresholds and requirements for various levels of development. Each one is typed, there's type one, type two, there's unlisted. And each one has various aspects that have to be reviewed. There's a public hearing requirement typically that's mandated by the town. So all the environmental impacts that a potential development could have need to be vetted through a environmental assessment form. This is probably gonna require a full environmental assessment form where they review, I think it's thirteen or fourteen different types of impacts to land, to traffic, to air quality, water, sewer. So this is just the initial run-through on this. There's a lot more work left to go. They haven't even been typed for SEAGAR on this.
Depending on how the applicant is, they'll give us some information probably once a month or maybe, maybe even skip over a month. But that's the importance of checking and see what's on the agenda of the planning board. And you can come here and, and just watch, understand. And then when the public hearings come up, and then that's when you'll have your chance to speak of your concerns to us and the applicant, and we'll go from there. But I think, I think this today was really important just to get an idea of what it is, you know, they're, they're thinking about doing. You know, and what we, what they would like to see. Again, under our review and the information that we get and comparing it to what the law is that we have to follow, then that's how it comes to either fruition or we say it's a no, a no-go. So.
Yeah, and I just would like to add, you know, as the chairman said, this is, this is gonna be a couple months. Like, if we're, if we're gonna be realistic, under the SEAGAR process, there's no way this is gonna get done in less than three or four months, unfortunately for us as the developer. But what it is, I really want to say to everyone at this point, this is when your voice can be very impactful because we haven't gone down a lot of technical roads yet. So if there's something you absolutely want to see here, don't want to see here, or have specific questions, or want, my voicemail and email are open. And I would love to hear from you because I, I honestly, that will make it go quicker on the backend. And when it gets to the point of public comment, sometimes, you know, heads butt. And it gets really specific. I would prefer now, if you have a strong opinion, other than, I, you know, don't, please don't speak in absolutes. If you tell me to go home and never come back to Highland again, I'm not gonna listen to you, but try to give, you know, what's the word? No, what's the kind of criticism that I, constructive criticism, constructive criticism. We, our doors are always open and reasonable changes we will always make within our capacity to do so. That's something as a developer we try to do. And Mike's worked on projects with us and he's seen us do that in the past. You know, we're not looking to, again, come here and put a square in a circle. It's not.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And one final comment. Again, my name is Dave Barton. I work right upstairs. Town Hall is open from eight to four every day, Monday through Friday. Sarah works in my office. You can ask myself, Sarah, or anybody in my office to look at plans, to ask questions, to review code questions. Whatever you'd like, we're here all the time.
Great. Your presentation done? You got anything else you want to input? Anything?
No, I'm, I was gonna ask you the same thing.
Okay, well, I, I'm good for now. And, you know, we can look this over a little more and give us some more time to take a deeper look into it.
Yeah, of course.
If we see anything else that we, you know, again, it's conceptual. We know things are gonna change, so we'll, we'll.
Agreed.
Hopefully you'll build off of what we have for you, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a great holiday. Thank you very much. So what we would do at this point is probably ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, and, and wait, I was gonna say, and we will see you next month, right? You don't have to vote. We are inviting you to be here next month.
Carl resigned that I, that I didn't know about?
So, hey, I'd make that conversation.
You must you be a town resident to be on the board?
Yes, it's not a public here. Yeah, I asked, maybe somebody made a motion for it.
Good night, Paul. Enjoy your holiday.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay, we made it to the second and that's it? You don't have a second? Have a great holiday.